Say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so our first order of business is election of officers. We do this once a year after the new members have been sworn in. Tonight's the night to do that. So we will follow the protocol. I'll lay it out there. We'll ask for nominations for each officer. Mr. Nelson will make nominations for president, and then whoever is elected president will take it from there. We will ask for nominations for each position. We'll vote on whoever's been nominated, and then move on to the next position until we are done. And then we will get to our board meetings, and we'll get to our normal public comments section. It usually occurs at this time. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Nelson.
So I'll open the floor for nominations for president.
I nominate Terry Ziegler for president.
Okay, is there a second? Jo Mail has laryngitis, so she can... You'll be hard for you to hear her, but I can hear her next to me. Jo Mail has seconded, and we have something to write out if she needs to. Yes, but I heard her very clearly. Are there any other nominations for president?
Move to close the nominations.
Second?
Second.
Giulia, second? Okay, all those in favor of Dr. Ziegler being, continuing as board president?
I'm sorry. First, we have to vote to close the nominations. That motion, just vote on that motion.
Yep, we seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we will vote on board president. So all those in favor of Dr. Ziegler continuing as board president, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Ziegler continues as president.
So then it will be appropriate to accept a nomination for vice president? Do we have a nomination?
I nominate Carrie Walls for vice president. I second.
Are there any other nominations? Then it would be appropriate to ask for a motion to close nominations?
So moved. Second.
All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. All in favor of Carrie Walls for vice president, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Congratulations, Carrie. Now we will look for nominations for board clerk. Do we have any nominations?
I will nominate Mark Taylor for board clerk.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Jo Mail for clerk.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, so I'll look for motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of closing the nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. Okay, so this is a first for me, that we have a contested board position. So I will, I don't think we have to do a written vote or anything like that, just a... Okay, so we had Mark first. All those in favor of Mark as clerk, just raise your hand. That makes it pretty simple to do the math. For Jo, there's three left. So Mark, a four to three vote, you are the new clerk. Congratulations. Do you have motions to nominate a treasurer?
I will nominate Paul.
I second.
Got a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? We'll entertain a motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Second.
So all those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The nominations are closed. All those in favor of Paul Lorgi as our continuing treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Congratulations to Paul. Those are your Board of Education officers for this year. We have, it says election of a CISA One representative. We actually appoint that. Jo, you've done it in the past. Are you interested in continuing?
No, can I make a nomination?
Well, you can't make a nomination because we actually, it's not an election. It's an appointment. So I guess if you're not going to let me appoint you, is there anyone else interested in being the seat of representative? Usually it goes to the first... Steve, I'm going to ask you to do it.
I would be more than happy.
Thank you. You will find that it is, it's not a lot of work, so you don't have to worry about that. But talk with Jo or Mr. Nelson after the meeting, you can see what it amounts to, and the money's good, so. So then we have to approve a schedule for next year's board meetings, and we're going to, that was also going to be a bit of a change, as we talked about experimenting with, instead of two meetings a month, having one meeting a month, and on the alternate Monday, instead of a scheduled board meeting, have committee meetings. The laws just have committee meetings in the evening, a little bit easier for people to get to. And it is the summer, so there's less, usually less district business in the summer anyway, so it's a good time to experiment with that new plan. By the time fall rolls around, we can see if we want to go back to two meetings a month. So I guess we need a board motion. Does anybody have, before we get the motion on the table, does anybody have any thoughts on that? Any other ideas or comments on that, that plan?
Are we planning on staggering the committee meetings for those of us that serve on multiple committees?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, yes, we'll try to make it so that we, you know, not want to have all the meetings at the same time. Do we, there might be, sometimes there'd be some overlap, but we'll try to schedule so that there's always, you know, if you want to go to one of the other meetings that you're not sitting on, you can. There will probably be times when there'll be some dual meetings. I mean, there's nothing that's saying we couldn't have a meeting from 6:00 to 7:00 for one committee and 7:00 to 8:00 for the next committee. If we have a double up meeting like that, we can do it that way. So we'll experiment with it. I think I'd like to make it, that gives us a couple possibilities. One, we can keep the meeting short, and rather than going on, we can keep to an agenda, and we can have everybody be at the meetings if they want to, so maybe we'll do that one.
And we don't believe that there'll be a need for the committees to meet every month, so to be able to get on a system where curriculum's meeting one month, the next meeting is finance, and maybe there will be policy that's tied in there as well, or there's something else coming up, so we'll maybe have that. Or if you need to, the nice thing about having something scheduled is if we needed to have, there was an agenda item that needed to be addressed because of whatever, that we could post for that meeting as well, and the board would already be planning for that, or something like that.
There could be alternative days in that week as well.
Could be. There'll be options that would go with that.
How many official board committees are there?
There is finance, there is teaching and learning, there is...
Marketing?
Marketing, marketing communications, policy. I believe those four.
And then buildings and grounds, but...
And buildings and grounds. Yeah, which we haven't filled since we did the committee meetings last year, yeah, which we haven't met since November, probably. There are really four, I guess. Three that are working now, and a fourth that needs to be working.
If new members are not assigned to a committee right now, so maybe reach out to me, we don't have to do this tonight, but reach out to me and let me know what committees you're interested in. Last time, we just sort of divvied it up, and it seemed like logical order, and it worked out. Everyone was okay. We might change, I might switch a little bit from curriculum to finance myself, so you and I can have a discussion. Maybe you guys can email me and tell me where your interests lie, and then we'll make some appointments and, you know. The truth is, whatever committee you're on, you can be at all the other meetings if you want, so it's not like you're aced out of anything, but... Okay, so just circle back to me, and then I'll circle back to Jeff. All right. So do we need a motion for that? I think we do.
Yeah.
Do we want a second or fourth Monday for the, I would recommend maybe the second Monday for our official board meeting, the fourth Monday for the...
For the fourth, because of business that occurs with finance, it seems like there's certain deadlines that occur, that that fourth one would come up, that we'd need to have a meeting.
Okay. Does anyone want to make that motion?
I'd move to adjust the board schedule one meeting a month with the board meeting scheduled on the second, the fourth Monday. Second, right?
Yes, yes.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Okay. That business being completed, we now will open the meeting up to our public comments section. If there's anyone in the audience today who wants to address the board publicly, now is the time to do it. No? Okay, we'll move on. We have two...
Sure, real quick, are we meeting in two weeks, then?
Yes.
Okay.
You started at the beginning by saying the summer, so I'm assuming that would be June, is what you're thinking of that?
Yes.
Is that accurate? Okay. Yeah, good question. Good clarifying. I heard summer, but I'm thinking June. We'd start that, so we'd continue till June.
Yeah.
Get school through school. Okay?
Okay, so we have two consent agenda items, approval of the minutes from the last two meetings. Is there a motion to approve?
We actually need to take them separately because not, the new board members were not seated on the 10th, so they can't vote on that one.
So let's start with the 10th. Can we get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes from the April 10th, 2017 board meeting.
Second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, so the same for the 24th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April 24th.
Jo seconds it. Any additions or corrections?
I've covered just one in Section 6B. There's just an extra A in there, since there was a not A clause.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Okay, Mr. Nelson, your superintendent's report.
Yes, so I wanted to highlight the reality store that John Long Middle School just had last week. Mr. Dearing was there, as well as Mr. Arnt, and Ms. Mathias was in charge of it, and then Ms. Giuliani from the high school helped out as well. And a great opportunity to see a lot of our students really having to deal with everyday life as adults, with cars that break down, with having children and paying for childcare. Both Mr. Lorgi and Ms. Walls were there as well, helping out. A lot of local businesses there. I always speak, Mr. Arnt was the, he was the police officer, so he walked around enjoying the fact of reminding students the importance of stopping before turning at lights and $50 fine because you didn't do that, or unnecessary noise and so forth, and watching these students trying to write a check and keep their ledger, and then they had to meet the judge later. But even like Seek staffing was there, and so students would figure out that, you know, I signed up for cable, and they had like a $14 package, and a $30 package, and like an $80 package, and a $120 package, and it was like, a lot of kids were signing up for a $120 package, because of course, you want a lot of cable, and you want fast internet speed, and then they figured, I need a second job, and then I was standing there when they were talking to them, and the lady from Seek had said, "Well, yeah, it's a part-time job. We'll change your hours whenever we want. This is the way it's going to be." And she said one kid had to work literally like 22 hours to even support all the bills they had. So really a great opportunity, and one student was talking to me about, one of the high school students had volunteered to help and had calculated the childcare, and was like, "Mr. Nelson, like, it's a lot of money to have a kid in childcare." Yes, it is, so, and it's more expensive when they're really little. So it was really a great experience for kids, and so, you know, we talk about hands-on learning and getting students engaged in something that's practically based, and that's truly an example of that. It's one of the things that we'll see with the, you know, most likely to succeed video that's being showcased next week, talks about more project-based learning, and this is great to see students engaged in that process. So thanks for the extra work that a lot of people went in to do that, but it was great to see that in action. And then a couple other things happened over the weekend, and I got emails about on Friday from Mr., one of them from Mr. Dearing, about John Long Middle School and PBIS. So Emily O'Connor, who's from the Wisconsin RTI Center, had emailed Mr. Dearing saying, "Good morning, JLMS folks." There's a couple other people on this email. "You may know that we hold a PBIS Summer Leadership Conference each August at the Kalahari and the Dells. Over 1,100 school participants to converge, network, and improve their PBIS implementation. It's a pretty exciting couple of days. This year is August 15th and 16th, with a pre-conference on August 14th. My colleague Stephanie Skolosinski is facilitating a panel session on middle school implementation. I had shared some of the exciting things happening at John Long Middle School regarding your Tier One implementation and the awesome energy in that meeting, and she wondered if you might be interested in joining this panel as a presenter. She can share with you more details on how the session will be structured. If you're interested, one person from John Long Middle School, get a free conference registration to attend if you participate, and it's sold out." So congratulations to John Long Middle School and Mr. Dearing, and it sounds like Mr. Dimmer might be representing John Long Middle School, because he's the internal PBIS coach, so it's great for that. And I also got an email from Kids from Wisconsin recognizing Nick Pavilick, a graduate from Grafton High School, was recently chosen from among many talented youth who auditioned this past February for the 2017 Kids from Wisconsin Show Troop. So Nick's a junior at the University of Wisconsin-Madison this fall, studies economics with mathematical emphasis, and is a trustee for the only musical theater student organization on campus, intermission theater, and a member-choreographer for UW-Madison's premier tap group, The Mad Tappers. He recently was a member of Greek Life's biggest philanthropic event on campus, Hymnology, in which cast originate many musical comedies to raise money for a charity. Their team raised $31,000 for The Rainbow Project. He studies voice with Katie Anderson, an MFS Voice student at UW-Madison. So they hit the road on June 22nd through August 19th, and they are doing this year's tour theme of "Head Out on the Highway, So Get Your Motor Running." So very cool, so that was a cool little piece for that. And then I was reading the paper yesterday, and I flipped open the sports section, and it had the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel High School Sports Award Night, which is occurring on May 17th at the Paps Theater in downtown Milwaukee, and I have never heard of this, and I'm sure it's been happening, and I've never was aware of it, but it's an interesting thing, where the Journal Sentinel brings together the top high school athletes in southeastern Wisconsin, and honors them for their accomplishments in every WA sport, as well as male, female, and Coach of the Year awards. Red carpet event has star power, thanks to an appearance by Green Bay Packers receiver Jordy Nelson. So it honors the, will not only celebrate the area's top performers, but also honor athletes whose ability to overcome obstacles show a value of high school sports that goes beyond wins and losses. And we have four students that will be represented. We have in swimming, we have Mallory Fox and Autumn Hebig, we have Sean O'Connor in swimming, and we have Amanda Parsons in softball. So really cool to, I just was looking at it, and I'm like, what is this? And I saw Grafton, and I saw Grafton, and I saw it again and again. So very cool of those four students, as well as their coaches, and their parents, and teammates. So that's a great thing that I just read about on Sunday. So it sounds like a great event in downtown at the Paps Theater for them. And, yes, and, don't forget, yes, I just saw this on Facebook, the GE of Color Blast is coming up on June 6th, so sign up online, and it's a great, oh, oh, yes, and I was able to attend the GES, and Ms. Mail was there as well. And so is Ms. Walls. I don't know, maybe some of you were there as well. Steve was there, too. Once I start naming someone, I probably shouldn't do that. So, but a number of us were there, and it was the multicultural fair, art show, fifth grade math competition game. They built a game in their fifth grade math classrooms at GES that occurred last week. So it was great to see students, and they had original food from different regions that they represented, and that they were researching more about, so it was also really cool to see that. Yep.
Did you want to recap Thursday's activities with Hoffman culminating in the Tier One Committee, or do you want to talk about that later?
I think I have, I'll talk about that at the bottom. Yep, I got that.
Okay, that's it?
Yep, yes, sir.
Jo, any more additions? You want to scratch anything else out on your whiteboard?
Good catch.
So then we have some committee reports. We'll start with the Finance Committee, Paul.
Finance Committee met on May 3rd. All of the agenda, or all of the items on our agenda, on the board agenda for discussion tonight, so I won't go into those in any depth. The only item that was not, it was a discussion, a preliminary discussion on athletic field projects, and that discussion centered around the fact that I think we had our second game, that we had to move again because of field conditions on the soccer field. So the soccer field renovations need to happen sooner rather than later. We need to, as part of the building project, and the fact that there's going to be civil engineering and other engineering done, we need to coordinate these two projects. So administration is going to begin working with Point of Beginnings and others to begin that coordination, develop some timelines for further consideration and discussion of the Finance Committee, and then ultimately for presentation back to the full board. It was just a preliminary discussion as to a need to get started sooner rather than later.
Questions for Paul? Or Topher, you want to throw anything in?
No, I'll be throwing quite a bit in later.
So Diana, come on up, you can talk with us about the curriculum committee meeting this week as well. Diana can fill us in.
Okay, so we had our curriculum board meeting on Friday, May 5th, in the morning at 7:15. Rick came and talked about our learning management system, the process that we've used with a team of 24 teachers across 612, and actually two elementary teachers, both Kevin and Scott sitting on that team as well. He shared the timeline and the process that we've used, and we shared the recommendation from the team to go ahead with Canvas, and one of the things we'll do at the next curriculum board meeting is we'll do a demonstration of Canvas, so you can see what a course looks like in there, from a student perspective, and a parent perspective, and from the curriculum perspective. And then as well, we will share the implementation plan. So a teacher team, about six teachers, and Kevin will be the administrator, along with myself and Rick, and Jen Griffith will be on there as well, with the six teachers, and we will start a two- to three-year implementation plan. We'll have a draft for you at our next meeting. So we talked about that, and then I shared the curriculum review process. We, I sort of highlighted Plan Do, Study, Act, that model, a cycle of inquiry model. We went over each phase, and then we looked at the different curricular areas that are in Phase One and Phase Two right now, and then in the next year or so. And there's a five-year, I believe it's a five-year document, so you can see looking ahead. We also talked about the new course process, with the timeline that starts around this time, or through the curriculum review process goes through a recommendation to the board in November. We talked about how sometimes that's tied to the curriculum review process, sometimes it's tied to innovative ideas that come out of a department, typically at the high school. So we talked about that, and then Suzanne gave a presentation about the People Non-Discrimination Self-Assessment. It's required a five-year review of our district data. Suzanne presented data and suggestions of strategies, and sought board feedback around those strategies. We set two, three agenda items for our next meeting, which would be the demonstration and implementation plan of Canvas, the role of instructional coach as we move our literacy coaches to instructional coaches, and an update on the social studies curriculum, and any other curricular areas that are in the Phase One or Two right now.
Any questions for Diana? Any additions from the committee members? Okay, thanks, Diana.
Sure.
Personnel report, Mr. Nelson.
So we would ask for approval of three resignations that we have in our district. We have Heather Riley, fourth grade teacher at Woodview Elementary School, Tom Miazga, fourth grade teacher at Grafton Elementary School, and Rebecca Ringhand, a communications art teacher at Grafton High School. As informational only, we also have Sean Taylor, our special education aide at John Long Middle School, as a resignation. So that's informational for you, but we do ask for approval of the resignations of these three teachers.
Is there a motion to accept that recommendation?
So moved.
Any questions for Mr. Nelson? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Teacher contracts.
All right, you have had a chance to review the salary spreadsheet. The dollar amounts on the spreadsheet are based on 2016, 17 contract dollar amounts. They have been adjusted based on FTE, expected FTE for next year. After approval, they'd be sent to teachers. They would then need to be returned signed by June 15th to accept that position. The final salary would be sent to teachers in a memo once salaries are finalized in August. So we would be looking for an approval of teacher contracts.
We have that motion.
I move to approve the teacher contracts for 2017, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for Topher or Jeff? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Thanks, Topher. CISA One contract.
So each year, we partner with CISA One for various services that we aren't able to provide ourselves, or are more cost-effective for us to partner with them. So instead of trying to hire someone part-time and find a highly qualified person to be able to do so, districts will partner with CISA's, with their CISA, to be able to hire someone that then maybe goes to different sites and so forth. So you have in front of you the contract that is the summary sheet for the 2017-18, and the amount of, we, there was a seat that was on here that we've used previously that we aren't going to be using, this English Scholars Academy, so that has been taken off, so there's a different price point than what they showed on the front end. But you can see that we have our membership fee, the service fee, you know, some of those pieces of family engage, excuse me, the educational audiologists, the Zaki Community High School, which is for at-risk students, students that are credit efficient, as well as our teacher of the blind and visually impaired pieces that we have on there. So we are asking that the board approve the CISA One contract for the 2017-2018 school year.
What are units?
Or you can ask questions, which I figured you'd have. I asked Suzanne to be ready for you, Mark.
So one unit, it has 15 minutes of service. That service is dependent upon the amount of time that's written into a student's IEP for specialized instruction or related services.
So we're looking for a motion to accept the recommendation?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation for the CISA One contract for the 2017-18 school year.
There's a second.
Second.
Any other questions, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Move on to bond financing.
All right, last Wednesday morning, at the last Finance Committee meeting, we had Mike Clark and Baird present fairly good news, updating us on our, on our bond financing. We can bring up...
That chart?
As you may recall, since January, we were going up presenting the financing plan for the referendum. It had a 66 cent increase in the mill rate based on decreasing payments based on current debt, and adding the new debt in there. Now, we were using, we're going to issue two different bonds. One would have a 4.5% interest rate, another would have a 4% interest rate. The interest on that would be, was $23.3 million. It also included lost aid of $6.6 million, for a total of $29.9 million in interest and state aid. Now, since then, Baird is providing, is using interest rates that are about 3.66% on the first issue, the $29.9 million issue, and a roughly, I think it's 3.36% interest rate on the second issue, the $10 million issue. Now, in their recommended plan, that would drop interest costs to a little under $20 million, and lost state aid of 5.3 million. Now, in this plan that they're recommending, it does provide some flexibility in that there is a special principal payment in the fall of 2018 that is based on that second bond issued. What that does for us is it provides flexibility in the fall. Once we get final budget numbers, we know what the biennial budget's going to be, we know what our equalized values are going to be, we know what our revenue limit is. Once we find that out, we can use that flexibility to manage the mill rate and try and keep that level over the next couple of years. Current budget put out by Governor Walker has an increase in allocation for state aid in the second year, but not the first year. So that would provide some flexibility. If we exercise that flexibility, it would look more like Scenario Two, where the interest cost would be about $20.5 million, state aid loss would be about $5.5 million. Again, that's a total of $26 million, which is still $3.9 million less than we are communicating since January. So what we need is to have, I guess I should say, another recommendation by Baird, was to have the bond sale not on a Monday, but on a Wednesday. So they're recommending May 24th, Wednesday, May 24th, to have the bond sale, which would necessitate us, or the board, to authorize a special board meeting to authorize and approve the sale of those bonds. I'll point out that with those lower interest rates, that doesn't mean we're going to have more dollars to spend in the referendum. Those will be a reduction in the taxing tag for taxpayers.
So all we're looking for is a motion to, to hold that meeting, but does anyone have any questions about this before we ask for that motion?
I just want to offer that at the finance committee, we talked to Baird about, because there was some question during the listening sessions or the presentations that we made about the difference between bank-qualified and non-qualified bond issues. And I had asked them specifically if we could look at three or four bonds of $10 million or less to get to that lower interest rate across the whole thing. And their recommendation and advice is that in our needs for cash in the first year, 18 months of the project, will exceed that $10 million. So this is, this is the best structure, borrowing the 23 in the first half, or whatever it is, and then the second half, in that bank-qualified, is the best structure. So I know that was a question that had come up at a couple of those sessions, that can we look at bank-qualified for the whole thing? We asked them to do that, they did, and it's not advisable, given the timing of our project. And the spreads on interest rates right now, and where they project interest rates.
And it should be noted also, they're still using a cushion in the interest rates of 25 basis points for the first issue, which is just a little over two weeks away, as well as 50 basis points in what would be an expected January issue of that second debt.
Any other additions or any other questions? So we'll look for a motion to approve the recommendation.
To approve the recommendation regarding either scenario but especially May 24th, to approve the sale of the bonds.
I'll second that.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and you'll send out to everybody to get on our calendars. Good. All right, thanks, Topher. Okay, some personnel recommendations, Mr. Nelson.
So our administrative team met multiple times, looking at personnel for the 2017-18 school year, looking at class sizes, looking at enrollments of student choices for the various areas, whether middle school or high school, and developed a set of recommendations that Topher has worked hard to make into a readable format. So this has been something, though, that our district admin team of principals and directors have met multiple times on, having discussions and planning out. That sort of leads us to our final recommendations that we talked about at the Personnel Finance Committee also last week. But Topher will walk us through those pieces now.
Yeah, so like Mr. Nelson was mentioning, we, this was presented by administration at the Finance Committee. There were, there was quite a bit of discussion, questions about these. I'll walk us through the different items, sort of in review, so we can look at them again. Item one, our reductions to student FTE, so based on enrollment and student needs, there are certain reductions we've made. And before I go any further, I'll point out at the bottom of the cover page that all of these recommendations, when added together, lead to an expenditure or personnel expenditure reduction of nearly $88,000. Moving on to item two, our, our elementary schools, as well as our high school, do not have a paid lunch duty. So eliminating middle school lunch supervision would bring that in line with the rest of the district. Item three is eliminating our hourly RISE staff. We would address what the RISE staff does by having a point, one of our, a new position, a .8 math position, teach that advanced 5th grade math. In addition, we would move from a pull-out model for our gifted learners to addressing their needs within the classroom. Item four is replacing hourly reading interventionists with two salaried reading interventionists. This would help us attract and retain teachers that we could keep for a period of time to better address our student needs. We've had a difficult time with retaining reading interventionists that are hourly. Item five is replacing our hourly math interventionists with salary, one salaried math intervention teacher. So this salaried math intervention teacher would pull out and address the needs of our, of our most needy math students. Then we would also continue to use a, a teacher model of having groups, intervention groups handled by classroom teachers targeted to the students who needed at that level. Item six is replacing a transition coordinator, which is a non-classroom teacher contract, with a dean of students, which, which is also a non-classroom teacher contract. We would address the responsibilities of the transition coordinator by doling that out to various staff members, much like comparable districts do. So we'd be more like other districts around us in doing that. By adding the dean of students, we would help support staff and students and administrators. Our administrat, student to administer, administrator ratio at the high school is a bit high. And so having a dean of students would help support that and help them, help, help our current administration address those student needs, as well as address teacher needs as well. Item seven, our additions to the student FTE, so we have increased enrollment in certain areas. Item eight is an early childhood aid that was added at GES this year. It was added after, after the projected budget was put out, so this is an add. And then finally, item number nine, in the district office, we recently had a resignation, and that has led us to reexamining some of the roles and responsibilities in district office, as well as taking a look at some of the upcoming needs that we're going to have with a nearly $40 million construction project and additional facilities across the district that are need, are going to need to be scheduled. And we're going, so we're going to bring that in house, into district office. So by hiring this new person, which is taking on some of the roles of the person who is resigning, some responsibilities of current staff in the district office, as well as some new responsibilities being brought into the district office, it does leave us with a need to hire a part-time position to handle office coordination and receptionist duties. So all those, those added together are a personnel budget reduction of nearly $88,000.
Any questions for Topher or Mr. Nelson?
I'm probably going to put you on the spot, Diana, sorry. Can you just briefly speak to the benefits of differentiation versus pull-out for RISE program? Sorry. I heard you coughing.
I'm sure you stop coughing long enough to do that. Sure. So for gifted learners, I've been working with a CISA consultant who has over 20 years of expertise in the area of gifted learners. She's been working with our district internal team, as well as the external team, that includes some parents, our RISE support team. And through that work, we've looked at different models and best practice to reach the, the needs of the high learners and gifted learners. So what, our current model has morphed already since I've been here, but when I came here, it was really a pull-out model, and so kids were receiving extra support for enrichment, essentially, during the I time, which might have been, and typically was, one half hour a week time, that they were pulled out and did something different. So research talks about what supports our gifted learners is not something more or outside of the class, it's something different within universal instruction to better meet their needs. So, so we are going to, we're, we're going to move to an inclusive model, but we're going to keep the traditional part of our model that does take a look at that top 1% to 3%, and we have criteria for that, data criteria. And we put in some really nice pieces this year with Iowa Acceleration Scale and, and through response to interventions. So we're going to keep that traditional model, so we have accelerative options, and typically our accelerative options at the elementary level are acceleration of a subject, or sometimes a whole grade level. And the whole grade level, they would be gifted in both reading and math typically. At the middle school, we have compacted pathways in math, and then at the high school, we have AP options. And those are all considered accelerative options. So at the elementary level, the best, the best practice really suggests that differentiation and meeting their needs in core instruction, providing them what they need, and based off the universal standards, and determining what they already know, and then giving them something different that matches what they need. So to support that, we're going to move our literacy coaches to instructional coaches, because that's, that's a model that supports that work. So some of the things that Lisa was doing as a RISE specialist was trying to meet with teachers, pulling resources for them, but she was limited with her hourly times that she could do that across through buildings. So instead, our, our literacy coaches moving as instructional coaches, now they can do some of that same, same help, but they have more time, and they're part of every IST meeting, which is through the response to intervention process.
Sounds like it will better meet the needs of students.
It, it should better meet the needs. I mean, we will, we will for sure monitor that. I mean, our coaches right now, as literacy coaches, sit in on every meeting that has to do with student data, and have been intricately involved in both the reading and math decisions, and supporting teachers in that work, and writing the advanced learning plans, making sure all the students have what they need, and participating in parent meetings. So that's already current practice, and we've started to, you know, work toward that this year already. Sure.
Any other questions?
One more. Question that I have. Do they have time to do both? Talk a little about that.
The coaches?
Yeah, yeah, will they have time to do both of those? Yep, reading and math. Will they be able to handle reading and math?
Yes. Well, so, so that, that is an interesting question, because today we went on our math visit to Port Washington and Muskego, and that exact question came up. So the literacy coaches in the transition to instructional coach went along. And so when we debriefed as a full team, half the team went with Mr. McMahon over to Muskego, the other half with myself to Port, when we debriefed, we talked a lot about the instructional coaching model. They have a very strong coaching model in Muskego, where they're having a lot of success with stepping stones and personalized learning. They don't have a coaching model at Port. They're also having success, but they don't have a coaching model. So we talked a lot about that, and what it's going to take is really sitting down with Beth and Jen and myself, and looking at where are the places, you know, like putting it out on paper, where are the places that we know coaching needs to happen? So new teachers, that's automatic. Where are the teachers that still need some of that literacy help? Where are the teachers that want that literacy help? And then where, where can we start moving into math? Social studies 5th grade, for example, we're moving into an inquiry model. So we're going to put coaching into those three classrooms as we move into inquiry, because it's highly, highly literacy-based. So it's really going to be strategic planning around what, what that coaching goal looks like. So, you know, there, there could be potential capacity issues. There's two people and three buildings. Next year, two, or two years, you know, two people, two buildings, that'll make it easier just from the standpoint of travel, still the same number of classrooms. So we're going to, you know, we're going to be very strategic.
In light of the fact that we are approving this before that planning is done, and before that capacity gap is known, can we get an update on what that strategic planning reveals, and the capacity, and the gaps, and how you're going to close those gaps, if any?
Yes. Yes. At the next curriculum board meeting, we're going to talk about the role of the instructional coach, and we'll have a plan put together. We always, we already have the role defined across, you know, what that looks like. We have the role defined actually as a, as a coach and an intervention, because sometimes there's questions around, well, what does the interventionist do versus the coach? So we will bring that. And I've asked Beth and Jen to come to that meeting once we set the date, so that we can talk about the role, and then we'll have a, a sort of a strategic plan of what it could look like.
So by then, we'll know the capacity, the available capacity and any shortfalls? About the handling of that?
Well, I don't know that we'll know it for sure, but we'll make our best guess. And, and we won't, you know, and then we'll just continuously review the process. And I meet with my coaches every week. We have a instruction, we have an assessment team, and Mr. Seibert sits on that. And then we have a, a coaching team, and so I meet with each team once a month. So it'll be a very easy process to kind of see how it's going.
Thank you.
On the music, as I go to you, just, so it's one year of the reduction in minutes for the 4th and 5th grade, just to cover next year, and then it'll be a full-out review of minutes and prep time and everything?
So the, so the music, Carrie's referring to the music position and the reallocation to current elementary staff in a document that I present, or that I sent to you in an email, to the board in an email. So it's a, it's a, it's a solution for next year, as we prepare for moving into two buildings. Part of the challenge was staffing that position at Woodview and, and providing equitable programming to Woodview students. So we've looked internally, because we have excellent staff, and the Woodview person has done a great job, but she's no longer interested moving forward. So we have a great music staff, and we're able to continue to provide the band and music services. We are moving in a direction for next year, as, instead of 45 minutes of music at 4th and 5th grade, to 30 minutes. It is in line with all, pretty much all of our neighboring districts. But again, it's a solution for next year. We will be pulling a scheduling team together at all of our levels. I'll probably be heading up the elementary one with the principals, and we're going to be reviewing what can a schedule look like in our new buildings, and what are our priorities? We need to, you know, prioritize getting planning time for our teachers, teacher teams in our PLCs. We don't have that well-designed at our elementaries like we do at the other levels. So at that time, we will look at equity of reading and writing and math instruction, because right now, 4th grade has less of that, because, 4th and 5th, because they have more music. We're going to look at creative solutions. There's three, there's a rotation, Cedarburg uses it right now, a three-day ABC-type schedule, where every, every schedule is a 45-minute, and, and that provides daily common planning time for teacher teams. So there's all sorts of different models that are out there that are working, and will be explored.
How many students benefited from the transition coordinator role? Any idea?
Well, how many, how many students did the transition coordinator work with? If that, kind of getting at the capacity, if that's being distributed to others too, is there? Well, so all students who have IEPs, ages 14 and older, require a post-secondary transition command, which the special ed teachers have always known to write them ACP and NAVIANS. And with that being accessible to our students with IEPs, we can really use that tool as a transition assessment tool, and really integrate the two together. And so, you know, I'm in a meeting with counselors to talk about how our counseling department and our special ed department can start integrating, you know, that information and that tool to create really good, meaningful transition plans for students without IEPs. So that's a big part of it right there, that she would meet with all students ages 14 and older and create those transition plans, and that's something that I really feel can be done collaboratively with our counseling department and our special education department. So she also started what were called community conversations as far as outreach, and partners, and with students utilizing that portal program, 10 hours a week, that'll free up one of our comprehensive teachers to do more of that, that outreach piece. So it's, it's really dividing up roles and responsibilities among... So it's, it's really dividing up roles and responsibilities among different departments coming together and working collaboratively, and not just being one person's job, which I think is going to be more effective.
Any other questions? So we need a motion to approve. We don't have one on the table, do we? Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? The personnel recommendations?
Move to approve the 2017-18 personnel recommendation that was presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you. For a discussion on athletic season passes.
Yeah, so this is an item that has come to the board previously, sent to it by the finance committee at that board meeting. The full board wanted more information on some of the, some of the purchases and the help that has been received by the Booster Club, some of the contributions that they've made to the athletic department. They also wanted to hear from the Booster Club as well. So at the last finance committee, we were able to present some items that had been, and it's in your packet, some items that have been contributed to the district by the Booster Club over the past three years. So we were able to take a look at that, and then have a good discussion with Mr. Scott Parsons, president of the Booster Club, who attended that meeting to address the issues that were brought up, the questions that were brought up. Basically, there used to be about $9,000 to $10,000 in revenue generated from the sales of these athletic passes. Since taking that over a couple of years ago, that number has dropped down to about $3,000. So the belief is that if the Booster Club took that back over, we would have more revenue available for our student athletes.
So the finance committee vetted this a fair amount. Is anyone else, none on the finance committee, who has any questions for Topher or Jeff? If not, I would accept a motion to approve the recommendation.
So move.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Name. One name. It passes. Okay, 4K and 5K student placement.
I just asked Ms. Lilly to come up and talk to us about, as we're looking at our enrollment, we've been looking at this as we're developing our budget recommendations and so forth, we're looking at our 4K and 5K enrollments for next year. And we're bringing just an issue to the board that we're dealing with, that we're working to resolve, but we wanted to keep you and the public aware of where we are with our budgeting, our enrollment numbers. So I'll turn it over to her.
Yeah, so if you look at the table, that is included, when you look at the 5K projected numbers, Kennedy, we've projected 30, Grafton Elementary, projected 45, and you'll notice Woodview, we've projected 55, and that number just grew again today. So obviously, we have an imbalance of numbers between the three schools as we look at that projected 5K for next year. So another thing we looked at is looking at students who, 4K students who are currently attending Grafton Elementary School, who, when we get the boundaries lines from Rightway, would be going to Kennedy in 1819 anyway, and do not have siblings either. So currently, there's 16 4K students without siblings who are attending GES, and possibly being going to Kennedy anyway the following year. So we would look at shifting those students a year early to Kennedy. Then what we would also look at is we have eight new enrollees to Woodview. Again, none of those new enrollees have siblings that could attend GES then. And then with the rest of the 5K students in GES, would be going to, that would be going to Woodview the following year, they would all move to Woodview together the following year for 1819.
Yeah, so the question is, what's the capacity for each grade level? Each thing, and the capacity's 24 is the max. Yeah, yeah, that's the max we have. It's full day kindergarten, so it's, so it's in the morning, so it's for the day. So what we're doing is, you know, obviously, we've already, we requested from Rightway, and Topher reached out again today, trying to get some attendance boundaries. So we're hoping, you know, at the next meeting, to bring preliminary something to you, because we need to start, you know, we've been asking for it, we need to, it's bringing some more urgency to it, from even a perspective here, because we can't have, you know, you can't have 55 students at Woodview with two teachers, or 30 at Kennedy with two teachers. So we also don't want students moving multiple schools, or moving to one school to provide an issue, to resolve an issue for one year, then going back to that same school, and then never even being with those kids again. So why would we look and move someone from GES or Woodview to Kennedy if they wouldn't be going back with their classmates? You know, you're going to stay with that. So we're, we're trying to, the boundary issue, there has to be a way for us to be able to look at what Rightway has, and no matter what plan they give us, be able to see, well, for sure, in these plans, these students for sure would be looking to go to this school. So we'd be able to sort of even out some of those areas, because we don't want it, we don't want to just say, well, we're going to move some students from Kennedy to get that down to one section, and move those kids to Woodview, so then we can have three sections at Woodview, or move some of those kids at GES to have three sections, like we're trying to allocate those pieces that way, with the least amount of disruption for students and families, but also being fiscally responsible as we're looking at our class sizes and the fairness equity for kids as well. At that level, having a much bigger class size isn't ideal at that early level, where we really want the smallest class size as possible.
Will you be leaving some space? Kennedy hasn't historically had more than the other schools' enrollment over the summer. There are later enrolers? No?
Sure. We're not, if we're able to move students, we're going to have, we're not going to be, we're not going to be maxing out Kennedy. So we're not, we're not trying to move 18 students over there to get to 48. That would bring down the other numbers even to an even lower number than they have to be. But somehow, getting some students out of those other areas to bring that number up is going to be helpful along the way. So, yeah.
And also, the opposite is true, where they have kids moving out, so kids moving out, you have kids moving in, and it kind of balances out more than it goes over.
We do have the data for that, but we'll be watching that.
Last year, didn't we have five sections of 4K? And it looks like we're going to have six sections this coming year? Is that right?
Last year, we had, we had, say that again?
Didn't we have five sections of 4K last year?
We had six sections of 4K.
Were we false?
Yeah, we had six. We had, we had seven sections of 5K.
Yeah.
Because GES has a bubble, so they have three.
The first year of 4K.
Okay. At Kennedy, there was only, okay, all right. Okay. But we are going to have six sections of 4K this year.
We are. We are. We, we, we looked at that number, and we've left room for more students to come in, because we had that discussion as well, of looking at the enrollment sizes and the class sizes, what that looks like. But we left room for students to come in.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Facilities update.
Student overnight tour requests?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's good.
My bad.
So I have two overnight tour requests that we asked the board to approve. One is for the Grafton STEM Club, and it is for the May 12th, and they return on the 13th. Students present and compete with a Class 1 six-foot rocket at Sheboygan Spaceport to provide their learning, to prove their learning and their selected research, and its connection to aerospace engineering. In this case, you can see Ms. Morgan is the advisor for this, for those seven students. All students still have their parents going up with them, parents are driving them up, are staying overnight with them. Ms. Morgan actually drives back and forth with the rocket, and isn't staying up there with them, but in her car with the rocket. And, but she, so we're asking for the board to approve, it's a total cost of $5 for the registration, parents are transporting them up there and staying with them and so forth. So asking for that approval. And the second one is the FBLA National Leadership Conference, which I mentioned earlier, Ms. Giuliani helping out over at the Reality Store. She is, we've had a number of our students, these five students qualify in these areas of the national level. The students all but one have their parents going along as well, to go along, and so that's why we don't have a male and female chaperone both going. So they placed at the top at the state leadership, and earned that right to compete at the national level. It's in Anaheim, California, and they're doing, they're looking to doing some fundraising now, and as well as getting some sponsorships for the Grafton community. They're working at the Color Blast and helping with that. But they're also practicing now to compete at the national level in FBLA.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the recommendations for those trips? Joan makes the motion. Carrie seconded. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. They pass. Now, facilities update.
Hi. It's definitely all the June 10th to June 18th at John Long Middle School, we will be replacing 220 feet of water main from Ninth Avenue to the east side of that, the east side of John Long. And shortly after that, we will be, the entire building at John Long Middle School, and that tough point in the exterior. That's all.
That was the water main that burst earlier?
Exactly during the holidays.
Okay, any questions for Jamie?
The water main is where?
Water main that extends from Ninth Avenue to the east side, that enters the building on the east side of John Long Middle School.
So there's no construction around that area? No planned?
Well, it just needs to happen before the destruction happens, following summer, because we're replacing that parking lot, and it's underneath the parking lot. So it did rupture over the holidays, so it needs to be replaced.
But we'd get a temporary solution there now?
Correct.
So when we, if it's under the parking lot, will we be ripping it up again in a year?
No. No, actually not. It's probably 10 to 12 feet the main parking lot, so it's well below the suburbs. So when we replace the parking lot, we will not be touching the water main.
But we'll be replacing the parking lot, so that first part of the earth is removed?
How much of the parking lot will be destroyed by replacing the water main? I think is what you're, is that, is that an accurate question?
How much of the parking lot? There will be a strip of probably four feet wide by 220 feet long, and it is located on the north end of the parking lot. And then we will place that gravel.
In the interim?
Yes.
So we won't re-ask for it?
Correct.
Okay.
The reason why we're doing it June 10th through the 18th is so that school is out of session, and it's before summer school starts. Because once we do this, then there is no water at that building, so we aren't allowed to have students in the building at all. And we need, and there's just very few times when we don't have students in that building. And so that's why it was strategically picked as that date. It won't interfere with us. We talked even in our administrative meeting about summer school, and teachers need to get their classrooms ready. Adults can be in the building, and they could just go over to Woodview to use the facilities if they need to use the restroom facilities, but students can't be in there during that time. So that's why it's in that window, to be able to do it as quickly as possible, so we can be ready for other remodeling needs to occur as we move forward.
A couple other athletics items. Girl softball is probably done by then.
I would say yes.
And then the Little League?
I think so.
They just have parking.
But are they aware of this too?
Right, there's a large parking between John Long and Woodview.
Yeah.
That entire area has some challenges with, because the Village is also replacing water mains.
Village has, yeah, Village has some roadwork going on around John Long Middle School. Do you remember those dates, Mr. Deering? Because I remember.
I don't remember the dates, but it's going on right now, and like directly to the east of us, in that little small, like bacon black night, we've got all the.
Yeah, and they were trying to work with us to help with different events that we would have, and so it wouldn't interfere with that. So the Village is great to work with. They'd reached out to us, that's why I remember speaking with Mr. Deering about, do these dates conflict with anything we have going on? And, because just that whole area is being renovated for that.
Any other questions for Jamie? Thanks, Jamie. So now the instructional update.
So we, we will, we have an elementary group that we are taking tomorrow, and I left that sheet somewhere else, that we are taking onsite tours tomorrow morning, and going to, I did not actually, and we are doing, going to three different schools. So we are meeting in the west parking lot, outside of GES, where students park at that far end there by the tennis courts, leaving District Office at 7:00. We are going to Forest Ridge Elementary School in Oak Creek, arriving there by about 7:45, doing a walking tour for about an hour and 15 minutes, looking at their remodeled facility. Then we're traveling to Cushing Elementary in the Kettle Moraine District, and driving out there, and taking an hour and 15 minute tour of that. We're then going to Wales Elementary, and taking a tour of that, and then having lunch there in Della Field, and then coming back here and debriefing. We're taking the two school vans, so that we have opportunity for people to collaborate while we're driving. There are eight teachers, one of the teachers isn't able to make it now, but we have eight elementary teachers, the three elementary principals, Topher, Jamie, Diana, and myself going on this as well. And then at the end of the day, we will meet with Hoffman, and they will, I guess they have, they'll, they have questions about the observations and the site visits, that they'll take that. And then we come back in two weeks for them to bring some design charrettes together, for us to, for the input that people have given, and what they've seen, and everything else, for them to bring back some design ideas, to say, is this what you were thinking of, is what we're looking for? So it helps them with their design process. We'll be repeating that again next Friday, the 19th. It hasn't been Franklin, there's three schools that we're looking to go to. There's Franklin High School, the Arrowhead 910 Campus, and the third is?
Kettle Moraine.
Kettle Moraine, thank you. And Kettle Moraine, thank you. And it's Kettle Moraine, and we're going that way. And we'll be doing the similar thing with high school teachers, doing the same thing, and then working with Hoffman for their interview piece, and then coming on that same day, I think it's 24th, doing the design charrettes in the afternoon for about another hour to two hours for that. So exciting pieces going there. A lot of teachers are very excited to be along, day tomorrow. You know, you used to figure we're starting at 7, ending about 4:15, and by seeing some great things, and what can that look like here? So it's great to have teacher input, administrators working with them. So we're looking forward to an exciting day tomorrow that goes with that. So those are some of the site visits that are coming up. Any questions on any of that?
Has Hoffman done any of those buildings that will be visited?
I do not believe so. If we were going to go, those especially, because we're looking for those that are done, some that are done. I know they've done some work at Whitno, and they aren't completed there, so we didn't choose that, and going a different, a little different direction there. If we'd gone to Fox Valley, then we would have seen that. And so I was looking at districts that we collaborate with currently, having connections with, so we can sort of hear a true story of like, what do you like? We also wanted to see something that was newer, not like five, six, seven years ago. Maybe they've already forgotten what they didn't like about it, they just sort of accepted the way it is. So we're trying to look for things that are newer, and like learn both the positives, and maybe even some of the things they wish they'd have done a little differently, what's fresh in their minds for that.
Good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, so exciting day there. And then last Thursday, we had, so we had our first, Topher and Jamie and I met with the Hoffman team. So they have construction managers at each, for each of the sites, with the three sites that we'll have. They, we met with them and some consultants, talking about, it was like a world language experience for me. They were using terminologies I've never heard before, talking about lumens, and I've heard of that before. But all these different things that Jamie was in his, I think it's, I think it's the first meeting I've seen Jamie really excited to be at. He really, he really enjoyed this one. They were talking about lighting, and all kinds of the HVAC, and plumbing, and all these things, just making, with these consultants, talking about what are some of the minimals we're looking for, the standards we're looking for, and those types of things. So we spent about three and a half hours with them with that first meeting. And then we'll have a tier-one construction team that will res- we'll have a, a tier-one construction team that will, will have Jamie, Topher and myself on it. We also wanted board representation there as well and so we'd ask the people on the finance committee to, to join us for that and that'll be what, it's an every other week committee meeting that will occur and then we'll report out, I'll report out to the board, every board meeting of what's occurring in those meetings and all those pieces that are moving along with construction. Once construction starts, there'll be weekly meetings that will occur on the site that Jamie will be at along with the building principal and then either Topher or I as well. They'll, they haven't figured out if it's gonna be like on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday or if it'll be like on a, you know, Wednesday at eight, Wednesday at nine, Wednesday at ten sort of thing, how they're gonna do that. So they're still figuring that out. But the meeting was really critical for us to be able to sit down with them and sort of get the consultants to figure out what kind of RFPs do we need to be going out for and, and what are we looking for and the timeline for various pieces that we're looking at that goes with that. Anything else to add? That went with that? Yeah, so good meetings, great meetings to sort of get the ball rolling and hearing all these things. We're coming, we ran out of time. Ironically, you know, you think from one-thirty to six, you wouldn't run out of time, but we ran out of time. So, this Friday, we are, Topher and I and Jamie are meeting with Hoffman again with their architects to answer some questions. They had about some spacing things or something, so we have a two-hour meeting planned for them this, this Friday. I'm at the state superintendent's conference on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday and I'm coming back early from that to be here by one for that, that meeting so we can get that moving as well, keep us going to be ready to have shovels in the ground as we start September. So they were showing us, even looking at, you know, we're in the high school, but looking at how they're gonna, having to be staging things and what doors need to be open and how, you know, and how students and parents and staff will enter the, the high school. There probably only be one door, probably almost everyone's have to come in through the main entrance because of just the different construction and keeping it safe and some of those pieces that'll go with that. So those are pieces that we're working through and trying to figure out what that'll look like and different side paths, it'll have to be temporary to get to various places and utilizing that and they're looking at fire codes and all those pieces. They have, coming back together on July thirteenth, they'll be going to the Architectural Review Board for the village and then on July twenty-fifth, they are going to the Plan Commission. So July thirteenth is the Architectural Review Board and the twenty-fifth is the Plan Commission. They've been working with Jessica and other people at the village, just informally and talking about various things, but this will be the, the first official piece that goes to the, to the village for approvals and making sure we're ready for that.
Okay, thanks. Any questions? Okay. And I'll look for a motion to convene in closed session to consider one, final notice of non-renewal, non-renewal of teaching contracts, two, requests for leave of absence, three, teacher contracts and four, performance-related data of the superintendent and other district administrators over which the board has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This is in accordance with Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five-one-C. The Board of Education may reconvene to open session. The Board may approve teacher contracts and final notices of non-renewal of teaching contracts. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
There you go.
Yes.
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 Yes.